All right, I'd like to call the December 1st, 2021, Repliance Select Board Meeting to Order. It's 6:30 PM. Peter Barris will be joining us shortly, but in the room, I'll just run through. It's Gwen, Sanza, Stan Noga, David Jones, Mark Bills, Guy Tanza, myself, currently in the room. First item up after calling the meeting to order are the changes to the agenda. I'd like to make a recommendation that we move from old business item 5C about the lease till after item 10, right before we adjourn, so that executive session.
What's that wire, Bruce?
We'll get it very, very.
Thanks. No, I just.
Okay, I'd also like to make mention that during my Select Board Chair Report, I'll probably be discussing a couple of items that came in the mail for communication. So that might be a little bit out of sequence as well, but nothing uh, nothing tragic. Anybody else have any changes to the agenda that they'd like to submit? Okay, so then we'll move on to reviewing and approving the minutes. I'd like to take a look, we'll go through the minutes of Wednesday, November 17th. Anybody have any changes to page one? Anybody have any changes to page two?
I don't know what. I'm sorry, let me see.
Yes, sir.
Just an inquiry, under Wheel, Excavator Purchase Discussion, third line, paragraph two, I'm sorry, second line, paragraph two. Is, was that truly intended to be January 1 of 2021 or January 1 of 2022?
It actually, my item, I see I have it circled too. It's supposed to be January 11th of 2022.
Oh.
That's when the right, that's when P. might think those. So that's January 11th, 2022. Anything else on page two?
I got something under school building, wherever that is.
Next, okay. All right, page three. Before we get to school building, I have something under the webinars, the second sentence. The, it says November 30th on developing highway budgets. It's actually December 7th. The webinar is on December 7th, developing highway budgets. And then Bruce, you have something under school buildings?
Arrangement, non-agreement, after completing, after completing the service arrangement. Not agreement.
That's after completing the code of service arrangement.
Yeah, not agreement.
All right, so Peter, when you look at this, it's under school building. It's the last word of the first sentence, should be arrangement, not agreement. Okay, page four. Any changes?
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, November 17th as amended. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended November 17th minutes, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, very good. Now we'll go on to the emergency minutes from the meeting on November 23rd, 2021. Anybody have any items on page one of two that they see it needs to be amended in any way?
I think the only thing would be to just change the word special where it goes to emergency, because it was actually an emergency meeting. Because we didn't warn it more than 24 hours in advance. So it has, it has to be an emergency meeting. So like if a header says emergency and then the first sentence in item four, and then
First sentence in.
The first sentence in item nine, I think, or the only first.
All right, so where it says, special change to emergency.
Yeah.
Anything on page two that needs to be modified or? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the emergency meeting on transportation alternative, the trans grant application from Tuesday, November 23rd to wait, do I make a little excuse? Making a motion to approve the minutes as amended with the emergency meeting, seconded by David, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, seconded by.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one extension for myself, I wasn't here. Thank you very much. Okay, there are no members in the public at this time, so we will move into review and discuss and finalize the road supervisor's job description, the attachment. Mark, I gave you one yesterday.
Yeah, that's a very, very good question.
Okay, did you get a chance to look at it though?
I didn't know.
All right, I'll give you my copy here for now. Anybody have anything to like? To I thought it was well done, I thought it was thorough and not too binding, but of course not too loose as well.
I guess the only question I have is do we want to approve it before Mark has really had a chance to read it? Do we want potentially feedback from Mark?
I can table this. I can table this for later on in the meeting when we get to your section, so you have a chance to look it over?
Sure. Right.
Okay. So we're gonna table this at this time and we'll look at it. Let me get that data straighten out. Okay. Next item, appropriation requests. Okay, I sent out to you the updated appropriation requests and there happens to be another one that came in the mail. Sits this, it's a new appropriations request. The Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance has written to the Select Board that says, as you face the challenge of budgeting process, we respectfully request your continued support of our modest request of $130. The support of area communities, donors and partners allow us to sample local waterways to identify problems should they exist and to make available to river users reports on the safety of their favorite recreational spots. Our efforts benefit all residents directly or indirectly. Healthy, clean water enhances the quality of life for everyone. Thank you for consideration of this request, Christine White, President. All right, what was the name, Southeastern? Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance, they're saying continued request.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Gloria Castolio that was headed that before.
Who?
Gloria, the former.
Gloria Castolio.
Yeah, from Newfane.
So, I already had that as something that we had gotten requests for.
Yeah, we have.
But it was for the same amount as last year, which was $110.
This is Southeastern Vermont.
On your list, there's a West River Watershed Alliance, but the initials are S.E.V.W.A., which I think is actually.
All right, so this was probably in the folder that Judy had put together of all of them, but they don't have right there. It was listed as the West River Watershed Alliance, C.V.A.W.A. But it seems like it's the same one, this asked for 130 and the other one asked for 110, so I'm not sure.
Where is, can I go grab the folder? Is it in the usual place?
Yeah. I messed up my picture. So there's a West River Watershed and Southeast Vermont Watershed.
Wow, those two different.
I don't actually I only see the last two years, not this.
Last year was support of Southeastern Watershed Alliance. That was for $110.
Right, no, I just mean I don't know where the folder for the new appropriations are.
Do you have the folder at home?
No, I brought it back last week, last time we talked about it, left it here.
She said he couldn't find it. Maybe she was working on it too, so.
Sorry, I'm just looking through the whole file.
That's okay. It's Mark's chance to read it over. This one was dated November 22nd and we see it November 24th. But we did get the West River Watershed Alliance earlier.
Yes, there's something, because after the first alliance, the Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance must be that one's issue source.
Yes.
So is Judy sent, did Judy focus this together?
I typed this list up from the folder. I mean, I may have used the wrong.
No, it's two folders.
That's why. I don't remember this, this had this diagram picture of the whole station.
Yeah, so you please.
This one. What was this one?
This one.
Neither of those look like. What they care, it was fused by the base map as well.
Well, but I'm assuming that this is, this, ooh.
I kind of said battery charging, I'm like, why? And that's like, we did for a while.
Yeah, these are all, yeah, this is the amen stuff, this is top of the. So I'm assuming that this.
I take that with a question. You're tracking things.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean.
Oh, it says West River Watershed Alliance, now Southeast Watershed Alliance.
So the only folders that I see in the appropriations section are.
West River, went from West River Watershed Alliance is now the Southeastern Watershed Alliance.
Oh, okay, so there's different station areas and it's a lot more money.
So there's the three things.
Yeah, there's, yeah, one, it says, the West River Watershed Alliance is now the Southeastern Watershed Alliance, okay? So.
Which I think that happened a while ago. But I guess the bigger question is, did we get two requests from them? One for $110, like we talked about at our last meeting, and now a second one for.
Yes, the second one with the new station.
But unfortunately, I can't find in the files here the remainder of the letters. The whole file for this year, I don't see it in there anymore.
All right, I turned it back.
Do you know where you left it? Just in like, where?
I, I choose these, my treasure. This is it, I have it, it's here, I put it here to find.
See, I don't file anything except for the.
Okay. Bye, I found it.
That's a like.
Okay, okay.
You had it.
This is the okay, real quick, let me find it. All right, we did get, as you see on my list, the other people I did contact and they all came through with a letter, including Valley Cares. Okay, they asked for, in September, they sent us a letter for $110.
And that's actually a request letter and not a.
It is that time of year again when Sebvaq asked for the dispersment of the allocated funds. Ooh, this is a dispersment of the allocated funds.
Yeah, that's, oh, they're asking for the check.
Yes, that's not the same.
That's not the same. All right, so this is what came at that time and I misread or could not recognize that that was the issue. So the, now we'll change it to the Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance and they are now asking for $130. Okay? So this one 10 should be crossed off? Correct. So it's $130, which is another $20 of. See what this. All right, so. All right, so let's see, we have here, again, Mark for Your Library asked for $400 more, Senior Solutions $50 more, and the Watershed Alliance, $20 more for a total of $970 of new appropriations requests for a total of $9,866. So from what we talked about last week, the new request from the gathering place needs to go as a separate article. Increases, are they to go as a separate article or how do you, how?
They haven't historically been done as separate articles. I mean.
So Southeast.
Granted, typically things have changed, but more free libraries.
120 for Southeast Watershed?
I'm sorry, I missed it. Excuse me, more free libraries increases every year. Has always increased and some of the other ones have increased by, usually not by that amount, but they do increase. And we've, since I've been on the board, we've never warned any of those as separate articles. But remember, we also typically display them in the town report and the warning showing what was given last year and what was given this year.
And we're not doing that?
So it's clear to people where there were increases.
Will we do that this year?
I mean, if, I assume we would.
Well, it depends.
I assume if we warn them as one article, like we have when we have a town meeting.
Right.
We would warn them all that way, that we would have a table like we've always had.
There's a book in the binder.
But if it's Australia.
That shows last year.
No, unless they've done, if they've been looking at it. Because you're just gonna ask to vote on that specific article for that price. It wouldn't know if it's a few bucks or 5,000 that we did last year. You know what I'm saying?
Well.
You know, if it's Australian ballot.
Um, right, I mean, I guess I'll say, not that we want to get too deep in the woods on this, but if it were to be an Australian ballot, we have to have an informational meeting, like we did last year. Granted, two people attended the informational meeting last year, Don being one of them. So, and during the informational meeting, we literally read through all of the articles and we then explained this was an increase from last year, blah, blah. So I mean.
We got our bases covered.
There's an effort to let people know what the increases are. But you're right, if it's a ballot, literally the article itself probably wouldn't say that.
Right, but that's their, that's their fault.
And fault, but Guy, Guy, you wanted to.
Just a quick question, does the Select Board have authority, the authority or the pleasure of adjusting the amounts that are being asked at the Select Board meeting before they submit it to the town as a budget item? It was my understanding that if the Select Board didn't want to increase or wanted to change anything, it was their pleasure that they could do that. And I'm just, I guess my concern is that we're approaching $9,000. We just got a big bump from the, the Southwestern dues for the fire department. We have another thing that's going on, insurance has gone up considerably. I'm just wondering, you know.
To answer your question, the first answer is yes, you can, the Select Board can, can
Change the.
Change the, change the amounts, not include them.
Okay, that's what I thought. You know, yeah, this is.
Relative.
I will only offer one piece of information and because I did offer this same piece of information last year when we discussed this. Granted, we were warning everything separately for Australian ballots, so there's a lot of things that were different. But I will just say for informational purposes, since I have been on the board for recurring appropriations, we have not changed the amount that someone asked for. We have always put that forward.
Because it's been.
We did, we have, we have sometimes not put forward new appropriation requests, like we did for many years with settlements.
Right.
But I'm not aware of us having changed an amount that an organization requested before presenting it to the voters. And for what it's worth, I will say as an aside, Newfane, the Newfane Select Board did that very thing several years ago and there was a big situation at their town meeting because of it.
Changing it?
Uh, changing it. So, you know, I personally am in favor of being transparent and giving the, giving the information to the voters and letting the voters decide on recurring, on organizations that the voters have voted previously to support.
So you want to tell them, more free library went up 400 bucks, dah, 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 dah. Give them the choice, it's their town, you know, okay. And, and this is.
Yeah, I mean, this is an unusual situation, I agree. It's not something we've really had to encounter, so it's, I don't know, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that's my opinion of how, what makes the most sense.
And, and also they gotta, they gotta understand we're going over this is where the entire budget is compared to last year. So if the budget went up $50,000, they might be more inclined to do some cost cutting.
It's almost $10,000, yes.
It's a lot.
Well, at the, at the annual meeting, if someone, when they ask to vote on this article, someone may stand up and say, I wish to, you know, make an adjustment on such and such.
But I don't remember, to refresh my memory, I've read 30, what, 30 million of them. But the town report's made up with, is the budget approval after all the appropriations? I think so, isn't it?
It has to be approved after the.
No, it's entries, isn't it?
No, I think the.
Usually do the budget first.
Yeah.
That's what happens.
Yeah.
So that means, okay, so they know, good, so they know upfront, you know, how much is increased and to that appropriation.
I mean, the other thing I'll say is that I know we're saying that this is almost $10,000, but let's not forget, last year was almost $9,000 and there's a 500, there's a new request for $500. So, you know, the existing requests.
Well, the last three years, we've gone up almost $4,000.
Yeah, we've been 60.
Right, but remember, that's also in part because the voters approved a 15, a $1,600 appropriation that didn't exist prior to that.
Yep, and it'd be really interesting to see, it's during a live town meeting, whether they would keep to that appropriations.
My question on that new request, is that, is that? Play the time, play the time on the turn, please. On the new request for the gathering, is that, that's put in as a, as a line item, right?
A new article?
A new article to give this new? Yes, that's a, that's a separate article. I'm sorry, Bruce.
That's all right, I'll get over it. More here.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the Select Board at this time with this form? I mean, it will be retyped and, and even provided to even, I guess, for including into the.
The clause is, clause is explained to the public, to the town, that we're, that we're getting, that the increase is fine, you want to increase it $20,000, fine. I just want the town to know that that's what's there.
So let me just say, I mean, just to refresh people's memory, so two years ago, when we had a normal town meeting and let's assume for a moment, we're gonna have a normal town meeting? I don't know. If we do have a normal town meeting, the way the town report, the way we warn the article, so the whole article that we warn includes, or the town warning includes all these different definitely last year's. We include, actually even last year we did, even though we were voting them separately, we did provide the. We show a chart that shows the organization, what they, what they, what was approved by the voters previously and what has been requested this year. And that's the article that gets voted on. And again, it has not happened very often, but there's the opportunity for people at town meeting to ask questions or to amend this, to reduce the amount of time. I mean, that has happened, it hasn't happened in a while, but it would happen.
But as opposed to Australian ballot, we should have given it all down individually.
Right.
All right, so what is the question of the board? We are looking at 22 reoccurring 22 reoccurring appropriation requests that occurred previously and one new request from the gathering place for $500, which is a separate article. So we're looking at putting it in the town report with a last, last year and the upcoming year request, with just two columns, they compare contrast.
So the other, the other thing I'll say is that obviously, again, assuming that we have a town meeting, when the motion is made, I think typically what the moderator will do is read the, read the article and bring it open for discussion and he will first throw it to the Select Board to say, is there anything you want to clarify about that? And so it's entirely open within, we can say just a couple of things to point out, the more free library request went up by $400 from 3700, the senior solutions went up by X or whatever. We can call out the ones that went up, so it's very clear to the people who will be there voting, the only people who are going to decide at that point what, how it's transpired. In addition to there being a chart, we can make it clear to the people.
Sure.
Exactly.
Look at the slide, yep.
All right, so do I make a motion to modify, edit the changes of the name of the West River Watershed Alliance to its current name and its amount from 110 to 130? Change that and then the new request and provide.
I will say, historically, we haven't really gotten into having a lot of votes about this specific thing if we all are at a consensus, because the reality is the detail of this is going to be in the article that we will vote in January. So we can vote on it, but we haven't usually because.
Oh, we don't, so we're just looking at, this is, this is okay that we're putting it in this way?
And if we're all agreed on the principle of it, then I don't know that we really need to worry about voting a lot of detail of this now, because we're gonna read it all at a meeting in January that's gonna have all of the same detail and the way we're gonna present it, and that's when we'll vote yes or no on it. But does everybody, but I guess I would like to, is everyone okay with the idea that we're going to put forward all of these requests as they were made? Cause we don't have to do that, like we said, we have the power to change these if we want. I think it's a bad idea, but that's just my opinion.
No, I think that the the town's gotta make the decision. We gotta be transparent, we gotta tell them, look, your, your budget's just going up forty thousand dollars and this is a part of it. Be clear, they'll, they'll tell you what they want for sure, especially nowadays with, with inflation and everything going up. It took a, took a five dollars a gallon for gas by twenty twenty three.
Well, and remember, the thing is because of this, is this because appropriations are worn separately, as a separate article, they don't really show up as part of the budget increase strictly speaking, until that has been voted.
And so.
Always had it.
Right.
That's right.
So it's separate to separate.
So.
We can explain that too.
You know, it's a separate increase, but it's an increase nonetheless, but it's, it's a bit different and voted differently, obviously, than the rest of the budget, which we completely control and completely present.
Right, and if I was selfish, I'd say, do it my way, you know, just do it, make the changes on this, make the changes on that, but really not. Really not the spirit of what you should be doing.
All right, so am I hearing that we will, I will retype this and, uh, with the, just a little edit on it and, uh, put it for the, in the town meeting booklet.
And gathering place, they were requesting one or something?
I've made, I've marked it up.
Gathering, that gathering place is a new request, right, and, um, yes.
Oh, okay. So that would be a new article.
All right. Okay, so we shall move on from there. Uh, Mark, since you took a, took a few minutes to look, you, you're okay, we're gonna go back to the, to the, uh, job description. All right, um, everybody had a chance to read through the job description that was emailed out for the town of Brookline Road Supervisor. And does anybody have anything that they would like to see modified, edited? Or is this something that I can assign this evening and, uh, put into effect?
Sure. I mean, I think I, if I missed anything, it's just like some stray little formatting thing, it's nothing substantial, I don't think.
Right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, adopt the road supervisor job description as presented. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving and adopting the town of Brookline Road Supervisor job description as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Uh, I will sign this now. Adopted, some, can't believe it's December.
Yeah. Um, and I just wanna say again, thank you Sam and Dot for having pulled this together and say, this is good, this is really good. I think it puts us in a much, like we talked about, puts us in a much better situation in the future, in fifty years when Mark retires.
Gotcha there, Mark.
He had ninety five.
With the gold medal.
Okay, all right, um, next item then, um, since you went back through here, is municipal budget items that, um, our town clerk got for us, a couple of items that he serves, um, that I thought we could fill in tonight, Guy, do you have that in?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, on, uh, I'm sorry, these aren't, they, these pages aren't numbered, so underneath, uh, you know, for for the Wyndham Regional Commission dues, we have listed it as fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, it's thirteen oh one.
All right, I'll be fine, you don't know what page that's on.
Uh, I'm, I'm going by one, two, three. I have it on the third page of mine.
What did you say, Guy, thirteen?
Oh, Wyndham Regional's thirteen oh one.
Thirteen, thirteen oh one. So just to be clear on things, I mean, I mentioned this before. I have been updating the spreadsheet version of what Samara created originally for this. And after tonight, I will plug in all of the appropriations ones and all the ones we're talking about and throw in some calculations so that for our next meeting, we'll have an updated version that'll show us how much we've increased or decreased things.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So that was the dues?
At least that's my objective.
Yeah, Wyndham Regional's, yeah, yeah, you had it fourteen, it's thirteen oh one.
Okay.
Just that way, there'll be less potential confusion.
All right, so Guy, you did the Wyndham Regional dues is one thousand three hundred and one dollars.
Correct.
Was there another one that you saw?
Uh, the insurance, our total insurance package is gonna be ninety three forty, but I haven't broken down with, uh, without the workman's comp, um, ninety three forty. So ninety three forty is our total insurance, that includes the, um, liability and also workman's comp.
Do we have a separate line and I have the workman's comp?
No. Uh, I don't know if you do, but, uh, the total, the total, because I'm looking at insurance and bonds on here and you're showing just five thousand dollars, I think.
Right, and that, and the thing is, is that, and we talked about this before a bit. Historically, um, we've broken down, we've broken out highway, though, though we pay one amount. We've estimated part of it as a highway cost.
I have got the highway funding.
Which has usually been four thousand dollars is what we budgeted.
Uh.
And we've budgeted the remainder of it in the fund one, so we'll just split it between the two funds.
All right, the highway is thirty nine oh four, I'm sorry, the town is thirty nine oh four, the highway is fifty two thirty nine.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And then for the, uh, rental property, it's nineteen oh four, or eighteen oh four.
Oh, okay.
Eighteen oh four?
Yeah.
What's the weight, so?
Uh, eighteen oh four.
Okay.
So, the, the highway is fifty two thirty nine.
Yeah.
Town is thirty nine oh four.
And the
and the rental is, you know, the school, the schools.
Eighteen oh four.
So.
This was for the insurance, right?
Yes, the total package is ninety three, what did it say, ninety three?
Ninety three forty.
Yeah.
My observer enough to.
And this year they'll be taking that in quarterly payments versus like two payments, so. But anyway, it's ninety three forty.
How much is it?
Ninety, ninety three forty.
That didn't go up, did it?
Yes, it did, it went up, uh, one thousand six hundred eighty four dollars.
Hmm.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. You have one.
So can I just say that, um, maybe I'm doing something wrong, these numbers don't add up to ninety three forty, to ten thousand something.
Okay, and, okay, they do add up to that, but there is a one-time credit.
Oh.
Uh, which, uh, I'll explain. There's a one-time credit of four hundred and one dollars and seventy five cents a quarter, you times that by four and deduct that from the ten thousand nine hundred forty nine.
It's ninety three forty.
Four oh one point seven five times four.
So that's sixteen oh seven credit.
And you take that from the ten, what was that, ten thousand nine hundred four and it should come out to ninety three forty seven. Or one or two dollars difference.
Nine three forty, okay. So, um.
And that credit is just this one-time, one-year credit. But that's our total liability, ninety three forty, with the credits, as you can see there's a.
Yeah, okay, so I guess, okay, so that's a one-time credit for.
This year, for twenty twenty two.
For twenty twenty two, twenty, for, so for the year that we are budgeting.
Right, it's gonna be ninety three forty. And that includes the credits.
Okay.
What prompted the credits, just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry.
What prompted the credits to arrive?
It was something, and I'll let you read it rather than. It says it right there, the credits are less contribution credit for fund years and less the one-time credit, remember equity from fund years. They have a way, because it's owned by the commu, you know, the, the towns, they have a way of funding and figuring out what it costs and what it did, based on actuaries and.
I, um, I, um, new thing with that one?
Well, I guess I don't know what we're, then.
Okay, well, and the insurance.
How are we breaking it out, again, I'll say historically, I mean, or do we wanna, do we wanna lump all of the school portion of it, let's say, into the general fund line item, which would be, would make that line fifty seven oh eight. And then know that we're gonna put in the highway fund budget fifty two thirty nine, which is gonna, I think, be the highway budget, five thousand, whatever.
Oh, so actually taking the, the.
Breaking it out.
The, the three items, the, the town, the highway and the other building and then charging it off to the, to those buildings. I think that would work.
Sorry, that's not what I was, that's not what I was suggesting, actually. Um, I, I guess what I'm saying is we now know from Guy, in the past, what we've budgeted each year has just been a estimate. It looks like we've basically, for the past several years, what we've budgeted, again, we have two funds. We have a general fund and a highway fund. In the general fund, we've budgeted fifty five hundred dollars for insurance. And then in the highway fund, we've budgeted four thousand dollars for insurance. Which is a little bit more than what it's actually going to cost us. But we're now finding out that perhaps the way it breaks down is actually different than what we have, how we've been budgeting.
Yeah, the highway is fifty three thirty nine.
So we can adjust our budget to try to be more accurate to represent this.
Excellent, yeah.
If we want.
Okay.
Understanding that it's going to make for an increase in the highway budget, but a decrease in the fund one budget. And also keeping in mind, this is a one-time credit, so in theory.
Yeah, every year's a.
Gonna be sixteen hundred dollars more, maybe.
Right, oh, right, right.
I mean, it seems to me we should, if we can be accurate, if we can be more accurate, why not be more accurate?
Absolutely.
Well, I think.
Now, that result is the same amount of money, is the accurate amount of money, in fact, it's less than what we've been budgeting. It's just distributed more evenly correctly, so why not?
I, I, I would concur with that idea, I need you first, Stan, you ready?
Cause I'm.
Okay, all right, so that makes, that makes.
So then that means we're gonna budget in the line item for fund one, we're gonna budget, oh, actually, no, I guess it does go on, even this one.
Yeah, the town is gonna be thirty nine oh four plus nineteen, uh, eighteen oh four.
So it's gonna be fifty seven oh eight. Rather than fifty five hundred.
All right, so fifty seven oh eight for the town and five thousand two hundred and thirty nine for the.
No, that's, sorry, 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 sorry. Then the, the further problem is we have this credit, so how do we, or how do we apportion the credit?
No, no, the. The figures I gave you include the credits, the highway is fifty two thirty nine, the town is thirty nine oh four.
But then the school is eighteen oh four.
Eighteen oh four for the school.
Right, but that doesn't include the credits.
Oh, okay.
That's without the credits removed, so, um, I mean, I'm just gonna throw out there that between the fifty seven and the fifty two, it is close enough to fifty for me, let's just put it down the middle.
Split number bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll credit
Eight hundred.
eight hundred and four to one of them and.
Yeah.
I guess the one I was interested in was the school, because, uh, you were looking for an exact figure for what the school is actually costing the town.
Eight hundred and four and eight hundred and three.
All right. So eight hundred and, uh, excuse me, eight hundred and four dollars, all right.
Okay, so I'm gonna explain what I think is right.
All right.
And maybe we can, so I believe what we end up doing is, before the credit, we were going to make fund one fifty seven oh eight. I'm now going to reduce that by eight hundred and four dollars for the credit, for that portion of the credit. Bringing it down to four nine zero four. And then the highway was going to be five two three nine, but we're gonna reduce that by eight hundred and three dollars. And we're going to then make that four four three six.
Does that come to ninety three forty?
Yes, it does.
Yep.
Okay, does that make sense to everyone and does that seem? Fair enough, I'm gonna enter in my spreadsheet the highway one right now before I forget what that number is. Even though I know we're not strictly speaking talking about the highway.
Could I bring up, I got an email today from Gary LaGuardna. That says the mutual aid dispatch dues for Newbrook for the town of Brookline. And he gave me a figure and I said, are we gonna get it a, this is how we get our invoice, which is an email from Gary. And he said, well, you can check on getting us a copy of the invoice, but, uh, he said the, the Brookline mutual aid dispatch dues will be ten thousand seven hundred twenty nine dollars. Last year it was ten thousand
What, sixty seven?
Four hundred sixty seven. So it's ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars this year.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, that, we got in, we don't. Gary provides us with this usually because he knows we're trying to figure out the budget, but when he gets the information, he sends it to us so that we have it to work with.
Right.
But that's, you know, we're not.
Can you tell me then what the insurance was for the town, what you decided on, I'm sorry.
It was, uh, forty nine oh four.
Forty nine oh four for the town?
Yeah.
Forty nine oh four net.
And the town and the highway was?
Forty four thirty six. Thirty six.
Uh, okay, so ten thousand seven twenty nine is the.
Uh, anything else, Guy, that you had?
Uh, no, I think we have, I'm still waiting to hear from the, from Cy Bailey in regards to how many hours he thinks is necessary to run our department efficiently. And that's gonna be in, in, um, payroll, where you guys do pay, pay stuff, which you're not attempting to do at all tonight. The other thing is that we still have the, the, the two, uh, which we, I think we already had, which was the Apex, the sketching and the, hold on, I've got my notes here somewhere.
The, the technology?
Yeah. Anyway, the, the Smith and Marshall, Swift and Marshall, rather, is included, yeah, I'm sorry, is included in the Nemrick dues that we paid, which was, um, six thousand dollars. And I think you also included the cloud, which was eight hundred and forty dollars. Um, so the numbers that you had in there are pretty, pretty solid. The only thing we're waiting for is the actual number for the salary in regards to the listeners.
Okay.
I'll also just note that, I mean, we still have to discuss and come up with what we're going to. discuss and come up with what we're going to budget for treasure and assistant treasures.
Correct, I, I, yeah, I have that for our, um, meeting, I'm thinking on the, uh, fifteenth. Yeah, on the fifteenth, budget salary discussions and such.
Can I suggest we also discuss probably the only other, not that it's a budgeted item strictly speaking, but that we also discuss recycling.
Oh, you know, I saw on my board notes today to talk to Dan, and I saw him the other, the other night. And I didn't ask him if he had heard anything from Windon Regional, but that's on here, um.
Yeah, we're still gonna have a question.
Yeah. So I will, I'll, I'll, I'll contact him to see if he knows anything. Okay. I guess that brings us up to date pretty much at this point in our, um, anything else before we move on to, because we, we've, uh, moved the executive session to the end. Um, so I guess we're at the point where we can do, uh, town clerk report?
Uh, town clerk, the, obviously the town is still busy. Although I can see a downtrend in the, uh, conveyances and so forth, that stuff has petered out now. I think there's not really much left in, in Brookline, we've probably turned over ten percent of the town. What's going on now is refinancing and, um, some trust and so forth, but it's getting down to a slower pace. Other than that, things are good. We're working with FEMA, uh, and DOT, and Mark and I. Um, so things are pretty much normal. We're looking forward to the legislative body meeting the first week in January. And it's gonna be an important meeting because at that meeting, they're gonna toy with this idea of what to do with the annual town meeting. Still up in the air, there is a remote possibility that they may pass a legislative, giving the select boards the authority to in fact, have it as a Australian ballot or go back to its regular way, which is where we are right now. The emergency ends Jan- December thirty first. So whatever happens in this legislative session will dictate what we're gonna be doing in, um, March. But we, you know, time is of the essence and like, the last thing with the COVID virus is everything comes all at once in one compact thing, and it, it makes for some stressful times for a lot of folks. But, uh, we'll figure it out, and, uh, we've got through this before, we'll get through it again. Uh, Gwen is still doing the, uh, digitizing of the, uh, land records, um. That's moving, you know, like, it's, it's a slow pace, but, uh, we're doing it, the same with council money. Other than that, everything is pretty much normal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for that. Um, I do want to make note that our town meeting will be on Monday, February twenty eighth, actually.
Right, yeah.
Alright, so we'll move on to, uh, my select.
In the evening, right?
Yes. Uh, select board chair report. I have a couple of things to, to share, and I did say that the, uh, I'll be talking about a couple pieces of mail that came in. Uh, the office of the governor has, uh, did this emergency session, special session. And, um, there is now the ability, if there is a, uh, request from the governing body to initiate a mass mandate beginning Monday, November twenty ninth, um. If the town of Brookline would like to do that, if, if anybody can bring it up and ask to be added to an agenda, I have it through now and in April, I believe it is. So, um, so, and they're April.
Okay, that leaves a town meeting just.
Coming due just about.
Here.
Yes, here in, here in the town, in here.
Oh, it wants to come in, okay.
Okay. Um, okay, another item that came in the mail, I think I'll bring this up first. Uh, we got a thank you letter from the, uh, town of Townsend on behalf of the Townsend Select Board. And I say that your letter of support and solidarity is much appreciated. I value the occasions that neighboring towns can stand immunity to make our community stronger. And that was in response to a notice that, a letter we sent, uh, about the Nazi flex. I'm actually gonna staple my email communications and a copy of the letter and what came about, um, to this, and then it will be placed in a folder.
Correspondence, fine, yeah.
For you to find, okay, so that will be there for anybody else, um. Okay, uh, I don't know if anybody signed up for the, um, uh, webinars, but anyway, the, um, what's it called? Knowledge, Knowledge Wave has a lot of new webinars that they, they have posted for the month, uh, I'll just pass it around. The month of December, if anybody wants to sign up, they are free, we're really taking care of that. Another item that I came, it came to my desk on November twenty sixth, uh, from the Assistant Treasurer Judy. And it's about the old community group fund. Says this fund has been enacted and Samar has tried to eliminate it from the accounting system, but it is prevented from doing so because there was a positive account balance of two thousand sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents. So Nemrick suggested to Judy that the town like to transfer this balance to another fund where it can be used, allowing this fund level, fund number six to be deleted. So, um, I will bring this up at another time, but it did come this week, um, that this two thousand sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents, um, could be put somewhere else at another time. Okay?
Do we think that's something that has to be voted at a town?
It's not a restrictive fund, it was fundraising that was done and that, um, that was done to do like the Easter egg hunt or things of that sort, or when the meeting house had, uh,
We used to go out, scholarships.
Yes. They used to have parties, you know, kids' parties, Easter parties, or things regular. Right.
Pretty much, yeah, Archie and Laurie were, and Joyce Mill, I think, were the original people that started that.
Right, so again, that's, that is, uh, an amount that we could probably look at to better use at another point, so I'm just trying to bring that to your attention at this time. Um, and also a very nice letter to, another nice letter to read to you. Okay, um, it's a little long, but it's worth it. It says, dearly, and this letter will confirm my offer and my commitment to provide a donation of up to ten thousand dollars at any time between now and July thirtieth, twenty twenty two for the restoration and upkeep of the Brookline Meeting House. These funds to be used as you and the committee determine most appropriate will be placed in my Schwab donor advised fund before the year end twenty twenty one. Earmarked for distribution to the Brookline Meeting House via check specified to be donations to the Brookline Meeting House and made out to the town of Brookline in March. These funds may be tapped by you all at once or incrementally, incrementally.
Incremental.
Yes, in installments of no less than two thousand dollars each upon requests made to me by you on behalf of the committee. Please do your best to give a decent amount of notice before the funds are actually needed as it can take Schwab as much as a week or two to process a check from that fund to a federally taxed, except nonprofit. I very much appreciate the work you put into the care you and the other committee members have taken over the last several years to restore care for and keep up the meeting house for its use by the citizens and the towns and guests. I am sure my direct ancestors and those other hardworking farmers and tradespeople who contributed not only their savings, but their honest sweat equity, as finances type prefer to jargonize, the physical work these days, to build this house of worship. Would love to know that a hundred and eighty-five years later, we still honor what they did and revere the purpose for which they labor. In the end, we know they actually inadvertently risked their lives to erect their church and experienced it as a miracle when they were saved from death after the scaffolding they were working on collapsed. Let's do our best to continue, contribute another small miracle or two to their memory, so that in years to come, all the fine people of Brookline will still be able to gather under the roof they've raised and bring out that bell in celebration whenever the spirit moves them to do so. I am honored to be able to contribute to this endeavor. Sincerely, uh, Howard Cutler. P.S. In preparation for another small miracle, once the work already committed to has been carried out, what say we in getting an estimate to replace that carpet with something softer, warmer, and more welcoming and possibly of a solid color? The carpet on the, on the.
Oh, that's the guy that came into our office.
Yes, and then we had, and we looked.
Last year, and I spent hours digging up.
Trying to find out.
His, his aunt, and he, we sent him my scan and we showed him everything else, and he's just at that rate.
He's very, he just, he did, he's very thankful, he said he's getting us ten thousand dollars
Yeah.
and, and for work that you've done last year, and then we're paying this year Liam to come around.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
And he is a descendant of.
So it paid off.
Probably generous.
Yeah, ooh, real nice guy.
And I think the only thing we found was in the seventeen hundreds in a, in a.
No, we, I emailed him, we text him a couple of deeds.
Yep, and the one in the, the little index card that I was.
Yep. Yep, he lived in California, so I wonder.
And he lives in Washington State.
Wow. Oh, okay.
Yeah, Washington State.
Somewhere, he's in Washington State.
Yes, he came by, yeah.
Oh, he's asked.
Where was the cut my property, it looked like?
I'm sorry?
I, I asked, I wanted property, cut my property, it says, could he look for?
Uh, no, it was with his family, and I don't know where it was, but one of the original people, I'd have to go back and look, but he was looking for some deeds and with his father's name or someone, uh, his father knew.
Roots or wood.
Yeah, and we tracked back and we finally found it. And I made copies of it and texted to him, and we just heard from him again.
While he was making plans to come back with us and to visit again, so.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, no, it, it turned out good. In fact, I kidded him when he came in, I said, nice seeing you again.
Is, is the end of the committee, no, issue with thank you letter or is that the summer? Oh, she's already, she wanted me to share with the select board, yeah, we'll take care, take care, thank you. She's getting communications. And, uh, what the, what the meeting, uh, Brookline Meeting House people wanted to do was to, uh, collect the estimates that have been gotten over the past year or more uh, about repairing the tow, the, uh, bell tower and ask for, uh, vendors to, uh, well, actually, we could do an RFP. But then she will ask those same vendors who originally sent in an RFP to update theirs. And, and, uh, we'll keep the board informing what's going on, so it's not what's gonna happen now, but we're looking at the, the spring. Um, springtime, so that's that.
That's great.
And. And then, uh, last but not least, in the select board, I received a contract from the Wynden County Humane Society uh, to, that they are willing to serve as our holding facility for stray cats and dogs. And the enclosed contract is here, and the contract amount is, is three hundred and fifty dollar flat fee. So, uh, I guess I'd like to make, have a motion, is that alright? We do that? It wasn't on the agenda because we should wait till another.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a signed agreement.
We haven't, it's, it's signing an agreement that we've.
Done every year.
That we, well, and that we've already voted to name them or absentee for the first meeting we had in March, so signing the contract to execute that, I don't think is something we really need to.
Alright, so I am going to sign this contract for the, because otherwise the dogs are gonna drop off at your house, your, your house instead of bringing it down there.
We're all. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Nobody wants, just kids.
Sure. And December first, and February twenty one. Done. I think this last year, um. Okay, town meeting. Um, I am going to reach out, if the select board is okay with it, to, uh, um, David Parker, and just confirm that he's interested in being our moderator for a town meeting. Uh, if it's in person, uh, if not, maybe being part of the online hearing, if we need to do that. But, uh, I just thought, while I'm thinking about it, I might as well, uh, reach out and do that before the end of the year. Okay, and let's see. Community through the mountain, that's what it's called. Oh. Last but not least, we, I did get a grant agreement emailed to me today from the, uh, uh, state of Vermont Agency of Transportation that I signed in October twenty one, twenty one. Um, and I just received their half back, they dated it, uh, uh, November thirtieth. So I will, um, review over this again, and I did.
Is that the equipment grant?
No, this is the equipment grant we already got.
Right, the seven, sixty seven?
This is, uh, 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 looks like it's a Better Backroads grant.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna, I'll share, well, I'll huff it over with Mark, and I did reach out to Archie Clark via phone, left the message that we were inviting him to the, uh, December eighth meeting. But if he has the time to meet with Mark Bills and myself before next Wednesday so that we can have an understanding, maybe some of these changes, like I said, the insurance liability has been shifted to the proper account, and there may be some other things that, uh, mandated repairs and such that, uh, we can have a better handle on, on that, so just, uh, having the same budget without any upgrades. So I reached out to him as well, and I think that's it for, let me just see, state of Vermont. That's it for my report. I'm sorry, we're going a little fast tonight. Okay, the town building commission, Bruce, you're next.
We're about to. Things are about to slow down.
Yeah, Bruce.
Uh, Dave had a question for you. Do you remember last year when we did the wood chips over there, if he was present? Do you remember, do you remember the conversation we had, and you kind of turned and you said, do you hear what you said? And it's something to do with negotiation of the, of the wood chips. Do you remember anything about that?
Um, I remember that we, I think we kind of settled on the idea that we would pay, you know, we were gonna pay for the wood chips that were gonna go on the town, um, with equipment, but they were going to pay for, but although in the end, I don't know that we ever got the wood chips, but they were gonna go on the, although, no, we did this later. They were gonna pay for the wood chips that went on their equipment, but we were happy to volunteer our time, you and me and Mark and Gary, to help them spread those, but it kind of seemed like that was a fair way to do it, and it just seemed.
Yeah, I, I remember hearing something, you were responding to it that you were having, this, this being viewed here, okay, I was just trying to.
Sorry, I don't remember.
Okay, okay, um, this, one of the things that happens, like, the first thing, it really blew me right out of the boat. And I'll just say it, and that's the end of it, and I'll move on to a little bit more details. But, um, what really got me blown out of the boat last three weeks was Olivia's emails to me specifically that basically eliminated any trust that he had in me at all. And it really upset me, really gave a party. But anyway, I just wanted to say that. Um, and I also wanted to say that every, anytime that they had emailed me, they had responses very quickly in every single instance. Um, they had a problem. But it's the way they expressed the problem, how they didn't trust the way I was handling it, that really flustered my butt. But in saying that, since then, you, you, I sent you all the information, what I did, uh, is well thought out and presented so that you all understand what was going on, and the reason why I did it was, so I went up to explain it tonight. Okay, so saying that, my, I'm changing the way I do things over there. Not gonna be so much hands-on with those people there now. Anything that I do, for the most part, unless I have to, is gonna be when I'm not, when they're not in the building. After hours, weekends. I'm talking about going in to inspect things, doing things that are needed to be done unless, unless it's an emergency situation and I have to be involved in. Okay, I'm saying that, um, I basically had one, two, possibly three, almost a third plumber involved in this whole mess with the heating system. And then to go fast forward a little bit, if I, I told Dot last, I had an epiphany about the whole situation. And that epiphany was that I realized in dealing with these plumbers, or professional people, technicians, whatever, that they had one thing in mind, was to fix it and leave. And then it occurred to me, see what happened here is we lost Pete Noble. Pete Noble was helping and doing a wonderful job, I was really happy with what he did, but he didn't want to part with it. So now we're gonna do it. But what I'm driving at is that the system has to be understood by somebody that represents the community. So that we don't trust the plumbers. to govern the system. I guess that's what I'm trying to, because there's a lot to it. And saying that, at this point in time, you already know this, it's, I went in there, I went into the school just before it came, before I came here, just to see how it was, just to see how everything is working. And everything is right the way I thought it would be, the two zones that aren't working, aren't working, everything else is working, they have enough heat to live. It's not the end of the world, I called Coda and Coda two days ago and told them, and they, they responded to me every single freaking time in the same day. They were great that way. And made a couple small errors, but that's the real world. And so I asked Tucker from Coda and Coda because I want, cause I had just started establishing a relationship with them. So I didn't wanna like blow him out of the boat, so I said, look, we're gonna be realistic here. I told him what I need to have done, which I put in the letter, I think I put it in, where the four zone valves have, I was not checked and or replaced the zone heads and second transformer and another purge valve. And I explained all this to him several mornings ago, and I said, look, you've been great, appreciate that you responded. But to be honest, we're out of an emergency situation now, I understand where you're at because they're dealing with a lot of emergency situations right now. But I still wanna do this work, this this work. And he said, fine, he said, I'll pick up a work order, I haven't heard from him yet, I'm gonna keep on it, to get him in and complete it. Now, that all being said, my motive is to, when that last visit comes in and they do all this, is that we take one final tour around the place, there's, uh, underneath the, underneath the floor in the old building where we cleaned out all the chairs, is the air handling, and I I want so, I I need to understand that. And I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna give anybody the feeling that that I now have complete control, the understanding of the heating system, cause I don't. I know a lot more than I did three weeks ago, but I don't, I'm not technician. But I think I'm in a position now where I can back off, train Mark a bit on stuff that needs to be done in terms of maintenance, and if a problem arise, we should be able to anticipate. Did I mention anything about the water cycles or something in in the information that I sent you on, I don't know if I did?
No, but I'm talking about.
Okay, but basically, I believe what you heard is, uh, well, I gave an analogy. My wife's ninety-six Rad Ford, classic Toyota, um, I replaced everything on that car except an alternator. Strut's done, well, well, well. What happens is, in a mechanical situation, if you deal, dealt with any mechanical stuff over a period of time, and these things end to work, end their water cycle. Uh, and like, example, I put in the, in the, in the paper I sent you, when Jeff first replaced his own valve that was in the grease hole room three years ago. And Pete Noble replaced the one that was hanging up downstairs. But what I'm driving at is that things are happening with that system because of use and age, and you're gonna get things breaking. So my focus is to try to understand the system as best as I can and try to prevent any serious outages and down because of lack of maintenance or not realizing that we should replace the batteries, there's a good simple analogy. There were at least six to eight batteries in in the in the in fuse holders, either the holders of the thermostats that were, looked like they were out of Halloween, I mean, they were all gray, they were moldy, and no one had ever looked at them, so whose responsibility was that? So I guess what I'm saying is, it's our responsibility to keep the thing functioning. So with that all being said, I set up a, um, uh, an idea of how to maintain it now, just like kind of what we're doing with the water system, so that we don't have this reoccurring all the time, or if we do have something happen, it's localized or just one room or just one thing happen. But I truly feel that once I get this walk around with these people, and another thing I did miss that's part, which really fried my butt, you can believe the amount of junction boxes I see around the heat system around, it's literally lightable with wire tacks.
So those are the things that need to be tightened up, you know, those, review those and, you know, in a sense.
Well, I don't know, we got to see, that's all we got. I got to look at, but there's nothing stopping mice from getting in there, but, and there's a, just as you walk into, you know, as you crawl into the place where we took the chairs out, there's a, there's a mice trap there, so what's that telling you, you know, that was put years ago. So basically, um, I had a, I had a line going in my, in my house here. Governed about five or six months, just within. I stole them all the time. When it's up to use. And so later it came back on, hasn't changed yet. And I, and I've seen mice, now you've seen mice damage, I've seen mice damage in my house. So to leave things wide gaping open like that with wire, no.
So it's just asking for.
So what I'm trying to do is tighten it up, understand it better, and eliminate these outages that, uh, that have been occurring. Uh, but we're gonna have a pretty good size bill, that I think when we're done, that we'll have much better control over, uh, the heating system will be in much better, but better shape than has been ever.
And and had you gotten some information earlier in September when you first started looking at, looking for a contract or you would have had these heating issues resolved before heating season.
Well, I kind of, I'm sorry, I cut you off, I didn't.
That's in your area, yeah, you know, your area, we just, it's December, it's December, but.
Well. Well, let's just put it this way, I had to change heating contracts, it wasn't working. Olivia, I'm not, I'm not gonna mix any both, Olivia knew that, I explained the whole thing to her. This is all not gonna happen anymore. From now on, everything's gonna be done really well, I have any issues that I need to discuss with anybody, with Susie's, Susie, uh, Susie's full opinions, it's gonna be with Susie Coda, it's gonna be direct, I have an email, I have a cell phone, I have phone. I'm not gonna go that approach anymore. I asked Olivia, since I came back from May from the Cape, four times for the numbers of the consumption of the gas to that building so that I could switch over, uh, to another provider. In order to do so, I needed, not only just to switch it over, I need somebody to work it. And I ended up at Coda and Coda, you all kind of know that.
Right.
Um, but Steph, I I finally gave up, and I was talking to Stephanie about it one day. I said, Stephanie, I really need to make a move here, I need to, I need to change over the gas so that I get somebody to work on the system. And she says, I'll get the number four H, I can form it within twenty-four hours. So, like Dot said, if I had, when I wanted to, sometime in the summer, I wanted to schedule having this work done in September, everything would have been checked out, we had anything running, if anything was failing, we probably would have seen it at that point, no guarantees here. Instead of November eighth, it might have been September eighth. So she kind of tripped me up there, and that that didn't help. Um, I'm just seeing that list, but I felt we need to go on on that. So, so we got a little bit more work to do, I'm gonna get them to come in. And I'm trying to keep see, trying to keep Coda and Coda happy so I don't get them all upset, like, testering them in five minutes because they responded. We had, uh, I believe, six calls from them, six times that they came, and they didn't get it. They didn't nail it the first time, and I was like.
Six calls from?
From them coming over to the building.
Service calls.
Yes, service calls. It was actually Harry Bobak who came, uh, came in after Coda Coda came in, I believe, excuse me if I don't have my time, my numbers right. I think the fourth time, and and, uh, Sean from Coda and Coda had analyzed the junction box and the transformer with it, with the test light, with, and and checked everything out, and I thought he had checked everything functioning. Harry Bobak, it didn't work, we still were having problems, Harry Bobak came over, he went through it, he was pulling his hair out, oh, his hair in the lines, dah dah dah, for two hours, when we got done, he said, so some of the recesses weren't working, so I think the transformer's bad. It turns out he was right, and that was one, two hours of this. So next time Chuck, who advised just before Harry came, to get a plumber in there to start cutting pipes in order to put in relief for, uh, for, um, uh, getting rid of, uh, air in the pipes, which didn't happen, we did something different. It was actually Harry that steered us towards that way, cause he came, Chuck came in and he said, okay, and he came and I, and this long fuse that happened at the inception, which is all written down. And Chuck, he took out his test light, ran it around the fuse.
Well.
I don't know why Sean didn't see it, but he did. Whatever, let's see if we fix now, and we're gonna complete the rest of it, and, uh, that's it, that's the end of the wall.
Thanks for all the work, I know it was a lot of work, I just appreciate it.
Yeah.
There was, there was a phenomenal pain in the ass.
Thank you. I I I'm sorry, you got blamed for things, but not your fault, okay?
Well, it wouldn't have been that, one more thing, last thing I've done, it wouldn't have been bad, as bad, if I was entreated so poorly by her. And that can go right on the record, and I'll defend it right to the nth degree, cause I got all the emails and the times that I responded. One, one final lesson, PPS, PSSR. I'm on call twenty-four, I'm seven. First thing I do when I get up in the morning, I go in, turn the TV on and watch my junk, and that computer goes on, Google Accounts, to see if I got any emails. I check at least two to three to four times a day, if I happen to be in the room, I check. So when she did that,
all right.
When she did what she did, I like this team part, you know, I mean, the tr- the lack of trust after all the work that I've done in that building blew me out. End of story.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, um, move on to road supervisor report. Mark?
Hey, um, Bigsby, like, Guy, um, we were talking earlier, we've been spending, uh, much time working with FEMA representatives, and we, Guy, Dot are so good with the technical part and the paperwork, and then helping the FEMA guys fill out all the information needed for work that it takes to get reflect money back, um, gone out on the road with Dot and GPS the damaged areas that we received from the flood back July twenty nine. Uh, I believe we, uh, logged down all of the damages, but there's still, uh, areas that'll need more repairs, but we've got everything uh, on contract with, uh, what's been done and what needs to be done. Still monitoring the roads, uh, moving tree and debris to local, some of the weather. Uh, and that was, Basin Brothers was one of the requests from FEMA, uh, to get a professional, um, estimate on the repairs of the damaged pavement on Button Mountain from the flood. And that for that, I'm still waiting to, uh, receive, uh, the numbers from that. Um, this week I had ordered our first load of, uh, winter road salt from American Salt Company, and that was delivered this morning, very prompt and, uh, good service. Um, as we talked about it a couple meetings back, uh, getting a supply in of three-quarter inch crushed stone to, um, be able to manage the wet seasons that arise, whether being an early February thaw or the spring. We now have a, a stockpile, um, and I covered that with a tarp today to, uh, hopefully keep future moisture out of there so that when we need it, it'll be manageable. Um, and I continue with general maintenance around town on the, on the list of of small jobs, uh, you know, I started, uh, cleaning up around the recycle bins whenever I see need be. And with the weather changing and the temperature changing in the daylight hours, it's kind of changing the job. But we're working with it, um, you know, I've got stuff I'm doing with and for rooms and, uh, and with the weather temperatures, it's trying to help me back in between my other agents and other jobs, um. And so basically, we're just, uh, getting ready to go into the winter months, and, uh, I believe we're ready.
I'll have to add to Mark's report, he he really is a treasure trove of knowledge about our roads, I I I've spent many hours driving around with you, uh, past couple of weeks, GPSing the road damage and and learning about the different road builder and ditch stone and, uh, uh, three-quarter inch gravel and and culverts and plastic line and.
This is fantastic, when Dad's not available.
Yeah, yeah, highway queen.
I'm gonna.
She can fly wave and stuff.
She's very helpful, I I enjoy, uh, riding roads with, uh.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's amazing.
Yeah.
She was.
And I never was, we, not yesterday, we went to, uh, Holland Hill and Purple Mountain Road, I've never been out there, but I got to see where the pictures, and then got to see the areas itself.
The, the far end of, of Benning, Benning Road.
Way out, raining.
Yeah.
Something, you know, that we rarely went to twice a year, go there, and, um,
Yeah.
but where we did repairs, we went over and GPS all the repairs and Dot wrote the numbers down and made notes of everything that I, uh, verbally put out there for repairs and, uh, made them be great.
So did you go in in one of your trucks or bus?
Yes, uh, no, I, I supply pony kind of, we'd be, uh.
Of course, buddy.
Yeah, yeah.
Buddy took took them all around.
Uh, I I really do enjoy, uh, being able to tell somebody, you know, see that there, that, you know, this is what I wanna do sometimes and
Yeah, no. And so, and when we talked about some of the future jobs, like Better Backroads area, we saw a grant, but turnaround by the, let me turn around, that he wanted to move the cobra twenty feet up and change the angle, and and he stood next to the debris that washed out the out, out with.
Yeah.
It's almost as, as tall as a man, so I mean, this is where the debris gets moved and then we, so I I think it's important and and, yeah, and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Dot's been great, uh, also.
Like, it's like your heating system, learning the roads.
Yeah. And and like Dave, how was, uh.
Like, both of you behind a pole, both of you.
Dave was very helpful in helping with, uh, some of the Better Backroads grants and then these grants and and Dot as well, and so
Yeah.
when we're out there, we know that each year we have new grant availabilities coming on, and Dot took some of the, I pointed out, you know, this might be a good spot for our next Better Back Road grant, so she took some pictures and.
Yeah, so I'll write, I'll write the J's.
Just don't have her back up.
You know, we haven't mentioned this, uh, we haven't mentioned this, the money that's coming from the.
She knows, cause I'm just as bad as she is.
She's just running, when she's running the grader, she can just go forward.
Yeah.
People get out of your way.
I used to drive to Big School last, you know that, right?
Yeah, it's the same color.
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
There's a dot that's ringing the past few years, but.
No, Dot, if I had to back up anything, get out of my way, cause I am awful.
Move the house.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's.
That's right.
Roll on, so that's, that's. Well, that, uh, I guess I'm here for the long run.
That's a bright.
Was this supposed to be on the end of your trunk?
Yeah, I agree, and you know that.
Yeah, that day, one day, and he actually showed me. Well, we get it all down, we'll share with the select board, it's a format that you can save.
Right.
All right, uh, any other selectmen, uh, like to, uh, make a report or have a comment or concern, they'd like to share it tonight?
No, it's just a point I made a minute ago, we haven't even mentioned it, and that's the fact that we're gonna get money from the infrastructure bill.
Yes.
And we don't hear that the state's got two billion dollars.
Two billion, as in being.
I have two things.
Okay, David.
One is that I did, the other day I got confirmation from Alan May, and I actually got something from somebody else at V-Trans, which I signed and sent back and amended to the grant, that we did all the paperwork that we sent, I had to send them a few additional things after the fact, but all that stuff got approved for the Barker Road Grant, and I told, I gave all of it to Judy and gave her that stuff, that we should be getting paid sometime in the next couple of weeks for that. we should be getting paid sometime in the next couple of weeks for that.
Well, I greatly appreciate all that, for you putting that.
Sure, well, you made it easy to do, because you had kept track of everything and gotten it, so that's, that was good. And the other thing is, we did submit or we got confirmation that our application was received from V-Trans for this transportation alternatives grant for additional supplemental funding, hopefully for the salt sand check. The one thing that's a little tricky about that one is they say right off the bat that they won't be letting people know about awards until February or March of next year.
Yeah.
So, it's a little bit longer period, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, it's pretty good, that's available.
And we're just waiting, at this point, I think there's just a few more pieces that Ron Bell has to wrap up. So that we can, as far as I'm aware, we're still on track to hopefully be able to put out an RFP in January, maybe.
Has a design been formulated? Now, is it all finished, the design?
Yeah, that was finalized a long time.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you had to change the, if you had to, you know, downsize it at all or?
Uh, no, I mean, because the, no, I mean, that was, that was never really an option.
Oh, okay. Good.
Because it was already
Yep.
pretty much the smallest thing we could have done, I think.
Yeah, Archie had done.
So our only choice really was to either decide not to do it and give all the federal money back or come up with all of the additional money ourselves and continue to do it, I guess. Uh, or that's pretty much, those were pretty much our two choices. Or try to get supplemental funding, which we've luckily gotten some and hopefully will get. If we get this transportation alternatives grant, then based on the estimates, assuming that things work out to be like they're estimated, we should, between that and our match, we should have enough money to do it.
Well, my question is, what is our match? Is that something that we?
That's gonna increase.
Budget for next year or over two or three years?
Well, I mean.
How do we do, how do we budget that?
I mean, I guess I'll remind, I'll remind people, this is a process that started five years ago. We never budgeted for any of it before.
Okay, so we should start that we might.
Well, now, we, I mean, our match is probably going to be.
Fifty thousand?
No, it's gonna be more than that. I mean, from the very beginning.
We were forty-seven.
You guys did grant.
Yeah, it was forty-seven, I think.
Forty-seven, something like that.
Yep.
Since then, we're now, we've gotten another, we're into it for another, I think our match from the first grant is something like twenty-four thousand dollars. And then if we get this subsequent one, our match for that will be something like another nine.
So we're another twenty thousand dollars.
So we're probably up to eighty thousand dollars in what we have to come up with now. Ultimately, assuming that the costs end up being what they're supposed to be. So.
Now, like you said.
I mean, again, like we talked about it, I mean, I think I brought this up, we, I mean, as we go through the highway budget, I mean, another thing we have to figure out, we do have to figure out where that, this money is going to come from.
Well, we need to get totals, you need to get totals of what, what has been in the highway budget that's been rolling over.
Right, I mean, we need to know a lot of
Yeah.
We need, we need to know a lot of treasury-related things around that budget. Um, and what we have in the accounts. And we need to factor that into our thinking along with whatever else we've got going. And it is true, we may we may decide that it makes, and also whether there, you know, how much of what we have in our highway budget now might possibly be eligible for some of the ARPA things. So whether, whether some of that money could be used elsewhere, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a lot of things where I can figure out, but.
Unknowns. It's not really, we would call it dedicated fund, we can move that way around. Some fund are dedicated.
Some funds are, some, some parts of it are dedicated, I think.
Yep.
Um, I mean, I will, whatever, this isn't on the agenda, so we're not gonna, but I, I guess I just throw out there, at some point, we also need to really figure out the treasurer's situation because
Oh, yeah.
we're, of course, gonna continue to bump up against things that without a treasurer who really understands our accounts, it's gonna be a lot harder to figure this stuff out.
I agree.
Uh, Dave, one thing there you mentioned, this started like five years ago, there was a five-year deadline. And then it got filled with the COVID and so, have you heard of any?
Well, so I talked to, I talked to Chris Hunt, who's our V-Trans, uh, project manager on the original grant and probably will be on these other things since it's the same project. And, and yes, he, he basically said that once, as long as we continue to actually make progress, though we might not be complete with the work on it by June thirtieth, they automatically, as soon as work commences, something essentially happens that gives more time to be able to complete. So I, nobody seems to be concerned about that at this point. As long as we do move forward with it next year, if we were, if, if something were to happen that put us in a situation where we were not gonna be able to do it until the following year, then I have no idea what might happen. That's something we'd have to delve into, but at the moment, there doesn't seem to be any concerns about having it all be satisfied, even if it doesn't finish until after June thirtieth. Because technically, the grant award does end June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. But that doesn't seem to be a concern at the moment.
Great, anybody, thank you, David.
Sure.
Anybody else? I have one more thing, when, when David mentioned the ARPA money, I, I was at a, I was in a webinar today through VLTC, which was about, uh, uh, the CUDs, or in our case, it's the DV fiber network, it's just the CUD. And they are talking about, uh, that they may be needing to, uh, request letter of credit. We may be receiving in some point when they're ready to do the Brookline upgrading, uh, request for a letter of credit against our ARPA funding that would support the, the CUD going to the bond market to provide the funding to do the physical building of the cyber optic networks when they subcontracted. So an interesting, interesting webinar that is, will be up on the VLTC website in the next couple of days. You can watch it at your leisure, but it was, uh, what was the lady's name? Trudy.
I know.
Tracy Buckley, this is Peggy, Peggy Buckley, she's very good. And there were three, three, uh, CUD people, uh, that presented. And I did ask a question and it was at the end of the meeting, and you type in a question and it was one, which they said was the best question of the night. And that was, you know, how do we determine what percentage of ARPA monies any particular town might want to dedicate towards this, this particular project?
Right.
And it depends upon, and their answer, all of them was, well, we think that the, it, the, the, uh, optic fiber, uh, infrastructure is the most important, but of course, it depends upon the town and what their, what their feelings are, and that's when maybe you gotta get the planning committee to commission it and per survey our town people and find out, you know, how do they want this money to be distributed? There's no rush on it right now, but it is something that if we start getting moving these letters in, we're gonna, yeah, just to be aware of it. So again, the webinars are interesting, give them a little bit.
Although by their own estimation, right, we're still years away from
Eighty-two. Correct.
them even considering doing anything.
Right, but they might say, you know.
Maybe they'll, there'll be more lead time for when they want to put the money aside again.
Yes. Right, yeah. So this was an interesting, uh, thing that I didn't think of before. All right, um, any other before we move on? All right, the communications, I think I already did the written mail, which was the contract and the, the letter from Cutler and, uh, uh, the additional email, the additional appropriations request. And the email was from the governor about the, uh, masking mandate, the jurisdiction that we needed to do. Um, if not, we're gonna move on to pay orders and accounts payable warrants. I guess he's happy to take a look at. We already have the, the printout of them, I guess it'd be easy enough if I uh, take a look at the payroll, um, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, sign.
Yeah, you can sign to it. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the payroll number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-one dated November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of four thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan, um, any discussion?
Give me a second, sorry, oh, sorry, I guess this is discussion.
Yeah, this is, this was already paid, people already got it paid, sent to their pay accounts already on the payroll, yes.
This is from the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
And the amount is what?
Four thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Not that one. Um, okay.
This is the payroll, the, uh, okay?
Was it amended? Just the one that I see, like, was sent around was, was a different amount.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. It's a different, it's one hundred seventy, what am I seeing?
Four thousand one seventy-four seventy-six.
Yeah, that's why I was saying. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, my, yeah, I.
Oh, wait, sorry, that is the one you're signing.
Yes, it's, uh, excuse me, the amount is different, I'm sorry, I think, checking, uh, payroll warrant twenty-twenty-two. The discussion is four thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, so four one seven four seventy-six.
Correct.
Are you amending your motion?
Yes, I'm amending it because I was reading you the amount for gross.
Seven, okay.
Seconded as the amendment was.
That's why you saw the look on my face.
So that didn't like, was it?
Well, now it's just looking.
I was thinking, I pulled the numbers here and make a mistake. Yeah, please be honest. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all right, all those, and we'll do the vote next. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-one dated November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of four thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, sorry about that, I was reading the gross line. All right, the next one is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two dated December first, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David, any discussion? My only question is, under A.S. Clark and Sons, it says services instead of material or, um, and then this one.
It's in the invoice, uh.
David, could you grab that yellow folder for me, so I, I
It should be right on the top.
Looked at it and I don't see, it said services and basically it is, um, material. It's, oh, they use item code service, but it's actually material, so I am going to uh, circle the word service and, and.
Yeah. It was coded wrong?
Say material, because it's just not the same thing. All right, so I've made a motion, we had a seconded, that was my discussion. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two dated December first, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, well, thank you, the motion has passed, so just make sure we get a signature, I guess it's back to David.
Sorry, could you clarify, uh, since I think I have to list, who moved to amend and seconded?
Who moved to amend the warrant? No, David.
David did, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, she amended her own motion. Dot amended her own motion and it was a friendly amendment and the seconder was fine with it, so didn't really change who moved or amended it.
Thank you.
Who's or seconded, I think.
Yes, thank you, I was. Okay, so, all right, um, let's move on, uh, the special budget meeting number two on December eighth, two thousand twenty-one will be held here at Town Hall starting at six-thirty, um, to discuss highway funding. Uh, is there anything else that we should bring to the meeting on that, or just worry about highway, highway funding?
I would worry about the highway.
I would, yeah.
Okay, let's keep it on highway funding.
I would just, yeah, but I mean, I would, I guess I'd suggest that the agenda just say budget discussion, so it leaves us open to be able to discuss some non-highway stuff.
Aye, perfect, thank you, okay, very good, I'll change that on the agenda when I tie it up for budget discussion. All right, uh, set the agenda for the regular select board meeting on December fifteenth. Uh, we will have a lease review, we can have a discussion on salaries, we can have a discussion on the recycling, um, you have to get that information, I will have talked to Mr. Parker about town meeting. Okay, and, um, okay, so.
The letter, the letter from the, uh, from, uh, water quality test, the chloroform test that we got.
The quarterly, yeah, the quarterly report was not submitted and I, I forwarded to you, I don't know if Nancy has done that recently.
No, I saw, I was absent of any, of any chloroform or any, any problems, but.
No, there was a, a, I just sent an email around from the water quality people saying that the quarter, there's a quarterly report that has to be submitted and it wasn't, it hadn't been submitted yet. I sent it, I didn't get the email until four o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, I didn't.
So I and I, I also carbon copied Nancy to see if she would, if she had any idea. So hopefully we can clear it up so we don't get penalized or.
Looks like they're getting the thirty-first of this month to send the chloroform results and if that is what she did in that thing that we got two weeks ago.
Right.
Then we're all set, but they also asked a question and want us to respond about whether or not this was, uh, uh, whether the public had access to the water.
Well, that is considered a public.
A tenant is public. Is public, that's what I thought.
Yes, right, yeah.
But they, they're looking for a response to verify whether it is or isn't, which I would assume she already had, right?
I would think so, but, uh, you know, that's why I carbon copied Nancy to see if she could add anything.
Mumble that too. Right, I went, well, I'm, I'm, is that what she does for us?
I haven't seen this letter, you should send it at four o'clock, so I didn't.
Yeah, I, I didn't get it till.
But, uh, I'll take a look at it and if it needs to come back, I'll, I'll leave it to the water testing. Okay, so at this point, we are back to where I tabled the, uh, executive session, so I'd like to make a motion at this time to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the town's lease contract with Suzie's Little Peanuts owner, Suzie Carter Marsh, would place the town at a disadvantage because the select board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses the proposed contract in public. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, second from Stan Nova, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in agreement that the premature general knowledge regarding the town's lease contract with owner Suzie Carter Marsh would place the town at a disadvantage because the select board risks disclosing negotiating strategy as it discusses the proposed contract in public, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Question what, BLTC, not the word. Okay, a second motion, I'd like to make a second motion to be dated this time to enter into an executive session to discuss the town's lease contract with Susie Carpermarch under the provisions of Title One, Sections two twelve, A one A of the Vermont statutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion, none, or all those in favor of approving the second motion to enter into executive session to discuss the lease contract, signify by saying aye. Aye, the motion passes. There will be no um vote taken at this meeting tonight. Will we return from executive session? We will be adjourned in the meeting. We are back out of the executive session. The time is eight fifty six P M. Write that down, eight fifty six. Um, at this time, I am going to make a motion that we adjourn this.
Can you just clarify that there were no votes taken?
No, both, you know what actions were taken in, in our executive session, absolutely. So I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. We have a second from Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting, signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight fifty seven. Thank you.